I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scarlett, please note Councilman Halpaska's absence. I want to welcome everyone to our June 3rd council meeting. First on our agenda is items from council. Bless you. Counsel, you have anything to...
I just want to say something. I had a constituent that asked a question and he said that he doesn't know whether... It's just a question, okay? He says he noticed that on the corner of, is it Cedar, Cedar or Cypress in Sam Houston, there's a bus stop there, but it's a school bus stop. And the kids are now sitting around on the curb, because first it used to be just a few kids, now there's about 10 of them there. And while they're waiting for the bus, they sit on the curb. And it's real dangerous, because you know, Sam Houston kind of curbs right there. And he said, "Maybe we could get together with the school district and find out about maybe putting some benches or something." You know, he was just asking, because he said, "If it's happening there, what about the other bus stops in town that, you know, people don't notice?"
Where? It's by the curb.
Yeah, tell me again the address, I'm sorry.
It's going to be in the corner, he said, of either Cedar or Cypress and Sam Houston, right there where it curves.
Okay.
Because you know, you have those angles for those streets, and the people, the kids sit in the curb waiting for the bus. So, you know, it's dangerous for the kids and also for motorists, you know, so.
Sometimes, I've had a few phone calls with the property owner, the kids will get in their yards.
Mm-hmm.
Kids will be kids, but that's safety issue, so.
Right. He just thought I'd, you know, bring it up and see what could be done about it.
Let us know.
Yeah, absolutely. Mm-hmm.
I had two issues. I was wondering if we could get an update from Mr. Short regarding the spraying for mosquitoes?
How about Colby?
Oh, Colby, I'm sorry.
Colby does that.
Thank you.
Unless Lynn wants to do it.
What are you gonna do? You sure, Lynn?
Thanks, Colby, I'm sorry.
It's all right. We originally were scheduled to go out on the 15th. We moved that back up to this week on Thursday, but we, with the out calls that we've got on Monday, we sprayed last night, we'll spray tonight and tomorrow night. We also are working with the ISD to spray the stadium for graduation for Friday and Saturday. And so we'll set that, we got this meeting set up tomorrow morning to meet with their director of maintenance.
Great.
On behalf of the whole citizenry of Victoria, thank you for getting out there.
I did ask Colby, what, last week? I said, "Are you ready?"
Yeah.
It hadn't even finished raining yet, "You better get ready."
Yes, we're ready to go, and we're doing it today, tomorrow, and next day.
Very good.
Another thing, not for you, Colby. And as you all know, we had an incredible tragedy that struck our community last week, and I believe a miracle happened as well. But I just wanted to take the time to applaud our first responders for their fantastic efforts that they gave to our community. We're very proud of you.
Thank you. Well said, well said. Tanner, talking about you and your guys, so, thank you. Mr. Alvarez.
Can we pull D-2? And also, Thomas, you had some dates for that training for the hot funds?
Yes, thank you.
Those at the tip of your tongue?
I do have them at the tip of my tongue. They will be on the 11th, and the two weeks after that is the 25th of June.
Where are they?
Maine, the 700 Main Center Building up there in room 204.
204 Main, okay.
That's right. Thank you for bringing that up. That's the Hot Funds Committee. And those applications are available now. They were posted online yesterday, which is June 2nd. And so those applications are available for people to download now.
Right, right.
Due at the end of the month, right?
Due at the end of the month, that's right.
Good. Anything else? If not, I wanted to mention, the Police Department has a PSA out, it's new. I believe it deals with car burglaries, very good, if you haven't seen it. I guess it'll run on TV, and I know it's out on the web, so I would encourage you to watch it, they did a great job, a good message. Okay, we do have one proclamation, we can go into that. And who's here to, Darrell, are you guys?
Brianna.
Okay. We'll read that, and I'll go down.
This is a proclamation signed by the mayor, and it reads in part, "Whereas the city of Victoria, in cooperation with PepsiCo and Waste Management, will observe Victoria's Schools Recycle Day with a ceremony on Tuesday, June 3rd at 1:30 PM to honor citizens of the PepsiCo Dream Machine Recycle Rally Contest, and whereas the efforts of local governments, school districts, businesses, nonprofit groups, and the staff of PepsiCo and Waste Management teach Victoria and schools nationwide to reduce, reuse, and recycle. Now therefore, I, Paul Pelashik, Mayor of the City of Victoria, do hereby proclaim June 3rd as Victoria's Schools Recycle Day in Victoria and urge recognition thereof. And it is signed this, the 3rd day of June 2014, by Mayor Paul Pelashik."
May I go back to your comment about the PA for the Police Department? I want to recognize that Josh in OC's office, I think, did the filming for that PA for the Police Department, the...
It's where he's in the park and the dog...
It's Joel in the park, there's no comments, but y'all, you all did that in-house, with people in-house, and it is a great little PSA, so, but staff's doing a wonderful job with that.
Real quality, I mean, the message is clear, the humor helps, it's really good. I just, I'm so impressed, so.
And that was Josh's dog?
Oh, was it? Okay. So now everybody's gonna want to go watch it, see what we're talking about. It's really good, really good. But I was, the proclamation that was just read, you know, "I was very privileged to go this afternoon to the event center in Torres Elementary, number one in the nation in volume," right, Darrell? And they got a $25,000 award for doing that, it's just so impressive.
Hundred and eighty thousand bottles and cans that they recycled in a year.
Right, from that one elementary.
One school year.
And, you know, I spoke a few words at the beginning, and I didn't have time to really collect my thoughts. I wished I'd have done more to recognize even your staff and what y'all did and their administration, and it was just, that's really impressive. And my hat's off to VISD, their superintendent, and that speaks a lot. They are really working hard, so.
Well, hopefully we'll have, we had three in the top 10 in the nation this year, so we're hoping for an even better year next year. I think winning that $25,000 is going to push a few other schools a little bit harder. And it's not just VISD, I mean, we need to recognize that Our Lady of Victory, St. Joe, and some other schools are in this as well. So it's open to all schools in the city.
And one of the speakers mentioned that it was doing a good deed, but it didn't benefit them, it's benefit to the community, and that's especially, that makes it more special. So I thought that was very well said, so, very good.
Waste Management was a partner in that, too.
Waste Management, Raymond and Michelle and their group was a huge part of that. They're actually the one that helped us convert over from Victoria Kids Recycle Program that the city used to fund, to the PepsiCo program that's completely funded by PepsiCo, except for some education help and some pushing on our part.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, no further items from council. We'll move into Citizens Communications. If anyone wants to come speak on any topic whatsoever, now's the time. Come up to the podium and, okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close Citizens Communications and move into C ordinances.
Item C-1 is an ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits of the City of Victoria, Texas, and the annexation of certain territory, consisting of approximately 6.713 acres of land, at the request of DGMP Incorporated, adopting a service plan for the territory to be annexed, repealing all conflicting ordinances, and providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is the second and third reading of this ordinance.
Make a motion to approve C-1?
Second. Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Item C-2 is an ordinance directing the city manager to execute the contract of sale to transfer approximately .454 acres within the Goodwin Avenue Street right-of-way to East End Lumber Company in exchange for $15,800, and declaring an effective date. This is also a second and third reading.
Make a motion, we adopt C-2?
Second. Okay, motion and second, any discussion? We've seen this one before. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Item C-3 is an ordinance amending the 2013-2014 City of Victoria General Fund budget to provide $250,000 in funding for the US-59 Business and Loop 463 Traffic Signal Project, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion, we accept C-3?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those, oh, discussion.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay, question to finance. You have $60,000 from the general fund and 135 from the sales tax development corporation? So that gives me 195. Is the rest going to come from TaxDOT, or where's it coming from?
Yes, the 60,000 is actually going to the engineering of the project. The construction budget itself is the 135,000 from the sales tax development corporation, and then the 250,000 is from TaxDOT. The TaxDOT is the reimbursable portion, so we're amending the general fund to allow for the expenditure. TaxDOT will reimburse the city as expenditures are incurred, and we'll put that back into general fund revenue.
Okay, so, once you get through with the total expenditure, it's going to be like 445, not the 250. But we're getting reimbursed at 250 from TaxDOT, right?
That's correct. It's a zero net effect on that. In order for the project to proceed, the TaxDOT condition is that we have to upfront the money, at which time we will reimburse within a year on the same amount. So the zero effect cost to us. Our cost out of pocket would be the 60 plus the sales tax money.
Okay. Is that going to be over a two-year period, or is that going to be all in one year? I mean, in the budget?
I would refer that to, well, the budget, it depends on the timing of the TaxDOT. My guess, it will be over a two fiscal period.
Okay, okay.
Short, because we're right now in June, so I assume sometime October, November, December, we'll get the full reimbursement. It's probably six, seven months, but still two fiscal years.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item passes.
Item C-4 is an ordinance adopting the standard specifications for public roadworks construction, version 2014.4, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is also a second and third reading.
Make a motion, we approve item C-4?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a question, and that was just because somebody asked. Are we changing the amount of oil that we're putting on the base, and if we do, something about the rock formation and, you know, what? That's just what I was told, so I'm just asking.
All we're changing in here is the type of base. We're changing from a gravel base to a limestone base and adding a geogrid. So there's no change in any of the emotions or anything proposed in this specification.
Okay. That's all.
Any further questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes, thank you. The rest all have public hearings, correct?
That's correct. Item C-5 is an ordinance amending Section 13-281A and Section 13941A of the Victoria City Code, related to municipal utilities and services, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, enforcement, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a first reading.
So I'll open the public hearing on C-5. If anyone wants to speak to this item specifically, now's the time. Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing, council.
I just have one question. What brought about the ordinance, is it an actual, I see you saying for the clarification purposes, but was there an actual complaint, or what?
No, ma'am, there was not a complaint. What happened was when it, when we, let's see if I can explain this right, I'm sorry, I'm tripping over my tongue this evening. When we went to codify the ordinance, that is, to put it into our code books and to put it online, the codification company noticed that the ordinance that we originally adopted was not clear as to whether or not certain language should have been changed. This is the ordinance that we adopted back in 2013. And you can see what we normally do on an ordinance is we cross out language that we're deleting, and we underline language that we're adding. And there was some language that did not have that indication, but it did not match what was in our current code. And so the code codification company called our office and asked, "Should we use the language that's in this ordinance, or should we use the language that is existing?" And so this clears all of that up by re-adopting the original language that was in our, it was never intended to be changed, and so this is reverting us back to the original language.
Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve item C-5?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Number six.
All right, item C-6 is an ordinance directing the city manager to execute the contract of sale to transfer approximately 102.2 square feet of right-of-way at 115 Idlewood, owned by Danielle Witty, in exchange for $203.57, and declaring an effective date. This is also a first reading.
So move.
Okay, go ahead. Motion?
I said, "So move." I'm gonna need a second.
Okay, motion and second, let's open the public hearing on it, if anyone wants to speak to it. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on that item. We already have a motion and second, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Item C-7 is an ordinance amending Section 24-86 of the Victoria City Code, relating to fees for special events, to add fees for parade permitting, barricade rental and staff setup, repealing conflicting parts of existing ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a first reading, so we will need a public hearing. And Mayor, before we get a motion on this particular item, staff would like to substitute a revised version of the ordinance. It is a non-substantive change, and it will be published in the packet for those members of the public who are interested. When we do the second and third reading, it'll be published. The only variance, the only difference is that we are changing some formatting to make it clear that the fee for lost barricades does not apply when the city sets up the barricades.
Okay, let's open the public hearing on this, if anyone wants to come speak about it now. Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing, and then, council, I know, I believe Colby wanted to say something, but...
I can answer questions.
Let's get a motion first. Will we adopt?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, did you want to...
I can answer questions, I got, I can go through it if you'd like me to, or...
No, I know that this is just in response to, how many months ago did we deal with the barricade issue?
January.
January? This is the fees in the process, as a result of that discussion in January, that's all it is. So, yes, sir, Mr. Alvarez.
Now, this is for commercial slash and/or nonprofits, or, I mean, it applies to everybody equally?
Anybody that wants to do a parade.
Anybody, for parades only. It doesn't include 5Ks or any other events through it, it's for parades only.
Parades only?
Yes.
And is it, barricade use, it's $50 for 10 barricades, or one barricade? What are we talking about?
However many they need.
However many they need?
Okay.
We're just not setting it up. They're coming to pick the barricades up in that case, they're going to give us a deposit. They set it up, and they bring them back.
Okay.
And if we get them all back, no damage, they'll get their deposit back.
Damage or loss, what does a barricade run these days?
It just depends, so we put current replacement value. Our city policy as far as purchasing, we have to get three quotes, go with the lowest and best qualified, and so that would be the policy. I didn't want to put an amount there, because those rates may change. And so we would go through our purchasing policy to purchase each barricade.
I imagine some are wood, some are plastic?
It'd be the same type of barricade that we currently have.
They're plastic.
Plastic, yes.
They're plastic, yeah.
They're more than you think, the Run Club, we went to buy some, and I thought, "Oh, gosh, we can just get plenty," and they're more than you think. We have about five of them, and we let people borrow them, but, you know, I don't remember the cost.
Was it, weren't they running about $70 last time we bought?
Seventy-five to $100 roughly.
But they have to meet certain specifications and so forth, it's just, I go buy some wherever, and...
We would handle the purchase of damaged barricade, we would handle that purchase, and then deduct that out of the deposit. If there was greater than the deposit, then we would bill the customer at that time for it, so.
And if the city staff sets them up and takes them down, that's $500?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And no deposit, just $500.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And that's good, I'm glad you, Mr. Alvarez, mentioned some of those. I just want to go through it one more time, because most of our parades have, the season's kind of behind us, and then it picks back up around November. And so there'll be a $25 fee, permit fee for the parade, and you're going to communicate to most of these folks ahead of time to understand that. And then the new policy on barricades, it's 50 bucks, they can come get them and use them, as long as they bring them back, and there's a 250 deposit. So they'll need to leave you $300, and they get 250 of it back when they bring them all back. Now, if they want the city to set them up, that's a $500 fee, which I doubt that'll happen to often. You know, I don't, most people will want to have volunteers and set them up themselves, I hope. So I think this is a good response.
And there's, that $25 permit fee is whether they're using our barricades, not using our barricades, or we're setting it up. Any parade, there's going to be a $25 permit fee.
And one thing, too, just to comment while we're talking about this. Every organization is certainly worthwhile, you know, we're sensitive to, you get the veterans say, "Well, we're the veterans, we shouldn't have to pay," whatnot, but the city can't afford to, we have to treat everybody identical, no matter good or bad, the entity, we don't make a judgment call in that, you know. So sometimes I have conversations with these different organizations, and we just have to treat them exactly the same, so everybody will have the same policy, so.
And we'll send out, after y'all adopted on the second and third reading, we'll send out notices to those folks that have been having parades, so they'll have plenty of time to know what the fees are going to be.
And you can't emphasize enough, this is for parades, not for events, okay?
We do not.
Because events are going to start coming, and they want, "Well, y'all have this for..."
Yeah, but...
No, we don't, it's for parades.
That's right, that's right. Any events, any runs, anything else where they need to go out and rent barricades, or, you know, take care of it themselves.
When they call me, I'll tell them to call Mr. Alvarez, that's what I'm going to do.
I'm going to go into the barricade business now.
Yeah.
No, I'm just kidding.
And I was kidding, too, I won't tell anybody, call you. Let's see, we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes, we do.
Any more discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Item C-8 is a resolution adopting an updated stormwater management program for the City of Victoria, and declaring an effective date. This is a resolution, but it will need a public hearing.
Let's open the public hearing on C-8. If anyone wants to speak to that, seeing none, we'll close that.
Donald does have a brief presentation to kind of hit the high points on the changes.
Okay. Excuse me, as part of our TCQ requirements, we kind of have to go over some of these items, some of these changes in public forum. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The resolution you have before you is a resolution to adopt an updated stormwater management program. Just to give you a little bit of background before we get into a few of the details, in August of 2007, the TCQ issued a general permit to discharge stormwater to small municipalities such as the City of Victoria. As a result, the city developed a stormwater management program that was adopted by council in January of 2008. In August of 2012, the city successfully completed the five-year implementation of the approved stormwater management program. And we've since been waiting, kind of in a holding pattern, for TCQ and EPA to agree on language for a new updated general permit. The new permit was issued in December of 2013, and what you have before you is an updated stormwater management program that meets all the requirements of that permit. I'm not going to go into all the details, as most of the changes are very minor, mostly housekeeping-type stuff in nature. But there are two items that I would like to point out to you. First, in the original stormwater management program, there were six minimum control measures that had to be addressed by the city. In the updated version that you have in front of you, the first two, which is public education and outreach, and then public involvement, they've been combined into one MCM. And I bring this to your attention, in case you're trying to compare the two together, they're not going to line up, they've been combined. Other than that, other than being combined, there's no major changes to them, they're pretty much the same. The second, and probably the most substantial change to the, is to the MCM for pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations. I want to bring this to your attention, because I believe it's going to, it's going to take a significant amount of staff time and maybe other resources to implement this properly and to meet those requirements. Currently, the MCM, this MCM only requires that we provide stormwater pollution prevention training to municipal employees, and that we monitor our street sweeping activities. In addition to these requirements, the new stormwater management program requires us to evaluate all city operation and maintenance activities, and that's everything from mowing to fleet services, to pothole patching, you name it, we have to do, we have to look at everything. And then see how it affects stormwater pollution. We also have to develop and maintain an inventory of all our facilities and all our stormwater controls, and that's everything from a stormwater control, I'm talking about a catch basin all the way up to a retention pond. And then all the facilities or anything, from an office building all the way to a water tower, it could be anything, any facility the city owns. And we also have to assess each of those facilities to see how they may or may not impact stormwater pollution. We have to then look at those facilities to identify the ones that are high priority based on TCQ guidelines. And any of those that fall into the high priority category, we'll have to develop facility-specific best management practices. And then we'll also have to develop and implement an annual inspection program for each of those facilities. Before I turn it over for, open it up for questions, I'd like to point out that the other three minimum control measures, which are illicit discharges, and then construction site stormwater, and post-construction site stormwater, are all about the same that they were in the previous one, there's no major changes. And these are the ones that will kind of pique the interest of our developers and our builders and contractors, but I don't see any major changes on those. And as always, you know, when we developed this, we were, we were trying to minimize the impact on our residents and our builders and our developers, while at the same time, you know, trying to meet the requirements of TCQ. So that's really about all I have, I'll open it up for any questions you may have.
Counsel? Do we have, we didn't have a motion yet.
Yeah, that's correct, we do not have a motion.
You want to make a motion first?
So move. Is it to make a motion?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
It's a move.
Second.
Y'all aren't very eager about this one. Okay, I just want to get that...
We don't have a choice.
Get it on the table. Yes, I'm fixing to make some comments, but I, did y'all have anything?
I was just wondering how much money the state allocated for all these additional implementation items that they wanted.
Zero.
I pretty much knew that answer.
I would, Mr. Bocknott, I'd be willing to bet this is passed through from the EPA. I don't know, staff?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, so you mean the federal government?
Yep. And I think that was a lot of negotiation on the TCQ to get it to where it is right now. I think they originally wanted, EPA wanted a lot more than this.
Oh, yeah. It's been coming for 20 years. This is the plan that sat on the shelf unadopted for about a decade, right? And that's not criticism, for whatever reason, then in '08, we finally made it official, There were reasons. But it is, this is very burdensome. I'm all for clean water, but wow. And the public, I hope, just understands again, this is not something that we, if we, I suppose as a city, if we had a choice, this is not our first priority, is implementing all this paperwork and rules and follow-through, you know? And I think everyone in here wants clean water, but, you know, it's a, anyway. I'll get off my soapbox. Counsel, do y'all have any other questions about this?
I have a few.
Yes.
Compliance, we're pretty much in compliance.
Yes, sir.
We're not seeing illicit activities out there that.
No, we've, we monitor after all the rain events and we have a quarterly inspection process for any areas that we think are high likelihood of illicit discharge. And then during that five-year implementation, we were audited by the state every year and we passed with flying colors.
Good grades.
Yeah.
Good, good. So it's working regardless of the complexity?
I believe it is. It's kind of a hard thing to measure, but I believe it's definitely working. You see, you see a lot more silt fences up and you see the contractors and the builders and developers paying a little closer attention to that, so I think it's working.
Good, thank you.
I think what the fear was in the late 90s was eventually it would end up where large retailers would have to collect the rainwater on their parking lot, clean it before they put it in the storm drain. And so, you know, maybe someday that might have to happen. Obviously, that would be a big financial expense, but anyway, it may, it probably won't be our choice if it has to happen, so. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to the consent agenda. There are four items remaining on the consent agenda that'll be handled with a single vote, and then we'll return to D2 and handle that one individually. Item D1 is at approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 20, 2014. Item D3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Zambelli Fireworks of Newcastle, Pennsylvania, to provide fireworks for the Fourth of July fireworks show in the amount of $30,000 and declaring an effective date. Item D4 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated for engineering services for the US-59 business and Loop 463 traffic signal project in the amount of $53,000 and declaring an effective date. And D5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to renew the annual supply contract of bagged Type 1 Portland cement with Alamo Cement Company of San Antonio, Texas, in the amount of $7.32 per 93-pound bag for a total of approximately $58,560 based on an estimated annual quantity and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Will we adopt consent agenda?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? They all passed, thank you. Let's go to D2 now.
Item D2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the 22nd Amendment to the Containerized Commercial Solid Waste Collection and Disposal Services Contract with Waste Management of Texas Incorporated and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion we adopt D2?
Second.
Discussion?
I have just a couple of quick questions. We have some representatives from Waste Management?
Yes, sir, we do.
Who are they? Could you introduce them?
Yes, Raymond Franks, who's our municipal sales manager, he's in charge of our account from Houston, and Michelle Sanborno. Michelle is our district manager for the Victoria District.
Right, I want to get them introduced. I know they probably travel from far places.
Well, Michelle lives here. She's a city resident.
Good. Well, my understanding is this contract is from 1993 according to the rest, to the attachment?
Yes, sir. Originally, it was 1993. And three years ago, two years ago, we renegotiated that contract. As part of that renegotiation, the contract was extended for 10 years. We got the curbside recycling with them purchasing all of the containers for that business, the household hazardous waste as well.
Good, good. No, I think they're doing a good job, thank you.
I have a question on it.
Yes, sir.
The trip charge of $100, what if it's a holiday?
It's still $100. Once that fee is set, it's set. Now, they do work all holidays except for the Christmas Day, New Year's Day, Thanksgiving Day, the same three holidays. We don't because the landfill's closed.
Okay, and if they don't pick up on the day that they said they're going to pick up, does the customer get a $100 credit?
No, anything, it's our mistake. If we tell them we're going to be there tomorrow afternoon and we're there three days later, of course not. No.
What's that again?
This, if they call in, dispatch says we'll be there tomorrow afternoon and we're there Friday afternoon, that's, no, we're, this is, we're not going after that money. Situation we have here is in direct correlation with the economy here in Victoria, Texas. Five years ago, this wasn't a problem, or it wasn't the problem that it is now. Everybody's shooting from the hip, there's a lot of industrial activity, there's a lot of new people that are calling us up and saying, can you send a box out? And we send a box out and the boss has changed his mind or he meant something completely different. We get there, the gate's locked, nobody's there, there's any number of things that are happening. And we're getting one to two of those a day right now. And like I said, five years ago, when the economy was normal or a little below normal, it wasn't an issue, but it is an issue right now. We're wasting quite a bit of time sending trucks out to places that aren't ready for us. Does that answer the question?
I guess to answer your question, Mr. Bocknight, no, there's, if they're not there when they say they're going to be, they do not reimburse the customer.
Well, the only problem I have with it, it's a one-way amendment then.
We won't charge them, if I'm understanding.
No service, no charge.
Yeah, if we say we're going to be there tomorrow and we're there three days later, we're not charging $100. No, if something happens when we get out there.
I was just wondering if it was a credit, so if you accidentally skipped a week.
In other words, if you, if we call in and you're not there on Thursday when you say you're going to be there, you push us back to Friday. There's no credit back to the customer because we didn't show, or Waste Management didn't show up on Thursday to pick up the box.
I don't think, Jeff, that's what Councilman Bocknight's asking. He's asking if y'all failed to pick up a normal, normal pickup, Raymond. I think he's asking if for some reason you failed to do your normal pickup. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Whenever I see additional charge like this, where it appears to be one-sided, so if a customer has his dumpster blocked or something and you're unable to do the pickup because of their fault, you're charging them $100, is what this says. But what if you don't fulfill your end of the bargain? What's the other side of the coin?
First of all, let me clarify that we're not talking about the fork truck dump. We're not talking about that. We're talking about roll-off boxes only, which is a large 20, 30, 40-yard temporary. This is nearly, this is going to be 95% temporary business.
Okay, that's my fault then.
Okay.
I would like to clarify one thing, though. If you have a commercial account and you are not serviced and it is their fault, then you have the right to call them and seek not paying for that. I mean, that's going to, the city doesn't get involved with that. But the customers need to know that they can, they do have that option.
Okay. Understand, thank you.
Very good. Okay, any other questions about D2? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you.